Mr. Mills?
Present.
Mr. McCombs?
Present.
Look at that.
Mr. Ryan?
Present.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Stoneman?
Here.
Mr. Dretzky? Mr. Courier?
Present.
Okay.
May I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
Madam Chair, I move that Mr. Dretzky be excused for his absence. Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to excuse Mr. Dretzky for his absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Mr. Dretzky is excused. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three on the agenda are minutes for, first of all, August 20, 2025. Any changes need to be made? Otherwise, we'll accept a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes for August 20th, 2025, as written.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Stoneman, seconded by Mr. Courier, to approve the minutes of August 20th, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are passed. August 27th?
I move to accept the minutes as presented.
Do you have your microphone on?
Yeah. I move to accept the minutes as put out for August 27th. Boy, that wasn't good.
That's okay.
Second the motion.
Second the motion. Second the motion.
My. All right, moved by Mr. Courier, seconded by Mr. Mills, to approve the minutes for August 27th, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass, and sorry, I forgot to ask if there were any changes. Okay. Onto item four, public comment. So this is the opportunity for anyone in the public to speak to the Planning Commission about anything not on our agenda tonight. And we ask that you come to the podium, speak your name and your I was going to say your birthdate. Just speak your name and your city will be good enough. And we'll give you three minutes. How embarrassing. Anybody online? Okay, then nobody in the audience. Mr. Ryan handed me a something that he wrote related to public comment. So he's asked if he could have a moment to just speak about it. So Mr. Ryan will give you the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to address this and for the record and for the people in the city who has participated in all the feedback during this time that we're trying to put our comprehensive plan together and all the emails, we've you know, we do our best to read them all and see what we can do to implement them. So I kind of put together a little statement here for that. And over the past several weeks, the Planning Department has received a number of emails from residents regarding the 25 to 2045 Comprehensive Plan Under the Growth Management Act. I wanted to take a moment to assure you that these messages have been reviewed and considered by the commission. Your voices are important. Your concerns help guide the way we think about the future of Anacortes. There was a lot of comments on the water development and the MJB project. And we received several comments regarding the MJB waterfront development and what the community hopes to see there. I want to be clear, this is privately owned land. And while the city can enforce zoning, building codes, and environmental standards, we have limited control over the amenities and specific design elements a private developer chooses to pursue. That said, it's our hope that developers and architects deliver a project that is community oriented and reflects the true character and beauty of Anacortes. ADUs, ADUs and rentals have been a huge, huge influx on these emails as well. Once again, you know, I've read through oodles of these and I'm trying to just group them and answer, you know, and know that I've addressing some of these. With the ADUs, you know, we've had extensive feedback on the ADUs. Many of you shared ideas and concerns about their design, placement, and role in our neighborhoods. It is important to note that ADU permissibility is state driven and that the city cannot restrict whether they can be built. What we can influence, however, are design characteristics ensuring that ADUs fit with our established building standards and our community design criteria. As for density and rentals, ADUs often function as income properties. Currently, our ability to track the exact number and location of ADUs is limited since existing units or or conversions are not always classified as rentals during permitting. Some cities manage this through residential rental registration programs, which provides accurate data. Such programs require staffing, funding, which have been concerns here in Anacortes. While there are grants available to support these efforts, implementing such programs would require direction from City Council and support from the community. Critical areas and environmental protections. Lots of emails on these. We also want, we also heard concerns about the ADUs and development near wetlands, critical areas. I want to reassure you setbacks and impact requirements are already established and enforce these standards ensure that sensitive areas remain protected. Growing in housing affordability. Obviously, that's a big push here and state wants it and trying to figure out how we can do that. Some of that's beyond the reach of the staff and councils. Change in growth are inevitable. Even if not always welcome in smaller communities, growth is driven by population and state laws require us to plan accordingly. While the cities cannot dictate market price for housing or force private developers to build affordable homes, we can adopt policies that allow such projects to move forward when chosen by developers or private citizens. Affordable housing solutions will likely require a community approach, exploring cooperative ownership or leasing models, encouraging homeowners to responsibly convert basements or garage spaces, seeking grants and creative funding to support housing that meets the needs of our workforce. These solutions depend not only on policy, but also on community members, organizations willing to work together. Annexation of forest lands. That was, that one, and we all take that pretty serious up here. And if I get this correct, another, so another one of those concerns was the future of forest lands. I want to reassure the community, Anacortes' community forest lands are not under consideration for development. In fact, past annexations have been done to increase and protect these lands, not to make them developable. Closing. As a planning commissioner, I want you to know that every comment, suggestion, concern we receive is read and valued. Many of your ideas are thoughtful, inspiring, some beyond the median scope of what the Planning Commission can achieve today. But all of these contribute to the conversations that shape our city's future. We are here because, like you, we love Anacortes. This is our home, our community, and the place we want to see thrive for generations to come. On behalf of the commission, thank you for your participation, your vision, and your commitment to making Anacortes stronger and better.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ryan. And so for the record, this is a letter from Mr. Ryan to the community. Now I'm going to go on to item number five, public hearings. 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update. This is a continued public hearing on the draft 2025 to 2045 Comprehensive Plan. So again, if you are interested in commenting, you are welcome to come to the podium and give us your input on the comprehensive plan.
So I'll give a little primer again on that.
Okay.
So August 27th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission held the public hearing open. There's no additional information being presented tonight. We're providing opportunity for more public comments tonight. The closing of the public hearing is anticipated to be September 24th. Since we're talking about comments, we intend in the next planning commission packet to have sort of a consolidated document with talking about the kind of comments that we've received and then we will have, we'll address it, those comments, either how we've addressed it or where they're addressed or some sort of comment along with each of those. And that'll be in next week's packet. And I know that you were interested in that. So we'll be getting that to you coming up at the next meeting. So we anticipate closing the public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan on September 24th, which is our next meeting. Tonight, we're going to be, after this public comment, after this public hearing continuation, well, the next order of business is the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Development Regulations. So that, we're scheduled a public hearing on October 22nd for that, for the development regulations. And so we're just working our way through the development regulations over the next several weeks. So with that, if there's anybody that wants to comment on the public, public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan, now's a great time.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. And I don't see anyone in the audience wanting to comment. Is there anyone online would like to comment? No? Okay, so we are going to continue this, as Mr. Coleman said, we'll continue this public hearing until next, next week. Next meeting, which is next week. And so that moves us to number six, other business. 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update Development Regulation Amendments. And this is a discussion item. Ms. Graje is here.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Libby Graje, Planning Manager, the Planning Community and Economic Development Department. Here to talk about Development Regulation Amendments and sort of the goals for this evening on this topic were to continue discussion of the proposed updates to the development regulations that are occurring as part of the overall broader 2025 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Process and hopefully getting Planning Commission feedback and questions that you may have about these various amendments. There are a couple of new documents that are available that I wanted to make sure that everyone knew about and that are, those are the State Environmental Policy Act Determination of Non-Significance. So the CIPA DNS. And that was issued by the city on September 10th, 2025 for the periodic update, Comprehensive Plan Update and Development Regulation Proposed Changes. So there is a comment period for the CIPA determination and that ends on September 24th. There also, on Friday, September 12th, we published the entire package of amendments, proposed amendments to the development regulations. And that was in your packet as well. But that document is now available on the website, on planacortes.org. And the comment, written public comment period on the Development Regulation Amendments goes through 3:00 PM on October 22nd. And we've advertised for a public hearing on the Development Regulations Amendments on that same day, Wednesday, October 22nd, at 6:00 PM. This is just the recap of the Planning Commission's time spent on the various Development Regulation Amendment topics. We talked about this last time. But then, so for, for this evening, just continued discussion. At the next meeting on the 24th, we're saving Division Five, which is community design and it includes public right-of-way improvement requirements and street geometric design standards. We have Transpo, Chris Como from Transpo, our transportation consultant on the comp plan update is going to be coming to present that, that information to you. And we'll talk about those proposed amendments in Division Five. So I'm skip over those tonight. So in your, in your updated packet, which we sent out yesterday, there is an updated staff memo that is similar to the one that was in the, in the packet for the 10th. But we updated the information in all of the tables to kind of try to provide the proposed amendments in order so we could sort of walk through that document and make sure we hit everything that you haven't discussed yet. I did, I think I brought copies, if anybody needs a copy of that memo. Okay. So I struggled a little bit with how to, how to present this. But I think what is going to, going to be easiest is I'm going to not use my slideshow and I'm going to go to the actual document so we can just walk through and I'll try not to, you know, move things around too much and make people dizzy. So if that sounds like a good plan to the commission, I have my, the staff memo that you have. And then I also have the Development Regulation Amendments document that I'll just zoom to the particular section that we want to talk about.
That was helpful to me. I have one on one side and one on the other and
Okay.
That's what I did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I started to do in my presentation and I ran out of time. So I'm sorry about that. I'll do my best to
That's okay.
To make it easy to follow. So the, I'm going to just go through, so Division One. So these are all Title 19 of the Anacortes Municipal Code, our Unified Development Code. That contains all of the regulations governing how you can develop land, what uses are allowed, and how land can be developed. And so Division One, there are no proposed updates that we have not discussed at the Planning Commission already. So I'm going to just, unless there are questions, zoom right on by that one. Okay. Division Two, we spent a little bit of time on that at the last meeting. We talked about the permit processing procedures. And there are a couple of other items in that division to hit on tonight. And those are including just a minor change in 1920-070, which relates to the city's vesting provisions. So the standards that talk about which codes a project needs to follow based on when it has a complete application. So when, when do you get to have that certainty that the codes that are in place are going to be the codes that apply to your project? So I'll go to that.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question before that. On, on your chart, I don't know what, it's page seven of 111 or 17 of 121? That doesn't look like it. Oh, it's, it's on the actual chapter 1920, where it lists the types of reviews. It's just a curiosity question, actually.
In the, in this table here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you tell me, or give me some examples? What is an essential public facilities type two?
Oh. I think an example of that would be, so type two.
It's under, yeah, it's under type three hearing examiner decisions.
Yeah. I would need to pull that up. I know that type one is kind of the larger facilities that are surging, serving the region. And so like, maybe like a prison or something like that. Type two is somewhere between a local facility and a facility that's serving a little bit larger area. There is a definition in the state code for these types of facilities that I, I'm happy to provide to you or I could pull it up now.
Honestly, was a curiosity because I see that the council makes decisions on the type one and the hearing examiner makes decisions on the type two. And I just didn't know what it was.
The type ones are larger and likely more impactful. That's why they go, why they're proposed to go to the city council. And the type twos would be of lesser size and impact, presumably.
Okay.
I can, I can follow up with you with an email?
Honestly, I was just curious because I see that the city council was the deciding body for type two and that's being moved also to a hearing examiner. So I just was curious.
Yeah, sorry, I don't have that, that information for you tonight.
Now we're on to vesting.
Okay.
Unless other people have questions. Do you have a question, Mr. Mills?
Are we going to be coming back to the detail in Division One or are we done with Division One?
I think we're done with Division One, but we can come back.
Whatever questions you have.
I made all my notes in the detailed schedules, not on the on the staff memo. On Division One, it's more of a comment than a, because structurally it'd be a hard thing to change. We've gutted the term family by defining it as people living together, related or not related. And then we define household as meaning the same as family. So family kind of loses its usefulness. We should have household, single, single household zoning rather than single family zoning. But that is so embedded throughout everything to try to change that a bit. It just, I read that and said, well, family no longer has to be related. In college, I lived with four guys. None of us were related. We weren't a family.
Welcome to the family.
Yeah, welcome.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, that was a, the state law says that the city is not able to regulate the number of people that live together in a dwelling and can't regulate whether they're, you know, related or not related. And so really, you know, whether the, the term is even necessary in the code anymore is debatable. So, but it is so woven throughout that.
That's really my point is that it loses its a citizen reading the word family would not interpret it to mean unrelated people.
That's why we have the definition. Yeah, I understand. And Mr. Coleman had some.
Madam Chair? If you want me to get back to the, I have the information about essential public facilities. Do you want me to close the loop on that real quick?
Sure, that'd be great.
So Libby explained it perfectly. So there's two types, essential public facility. Type one, regional EPFs. These are major essential public facilities that provide public services to more than one county and where the provider has a statutory authority to site and construct a facility and where regional intergovernmental citing processes have been followed. These facilities may include, but are limited to regional transportation facilities, such as regional airports, state correction facilities, as Libby mentioned, and state educational facilities. The Behavioral Health Center on the west side of Seadrwoolly was processed as a type one EPF, I believe, because it's serving potentially beyond the county, although there was some debate about that. And type two are local EPF, essential public facilities.
Okay, so a school would be a type one?
Yeah, unless it's a college.
And a college would be a type two? That's interesting.
I believe so. There's, there's a lot of nuances here. But that, that's the long and short of it is like ones, the type one's more major and the type two's a local. And so that's why they're, they're treated differently in our type, in our review code.
All right, thank you for closing the loop. Now we can get on to vesting.
All right, so vesting. So this, this change or the concept of this change was an item that was docketed in 2021. Part of that docket that was unfinished. And so this was one that council put on the 2025 docket to close the loop on this and, and make sure that those amendments were processed as part of the 2025 updates. Really, the only change proposed here is to strike out the sentence that says, "Applications where site plans do not vest at the time of complete application is filed." And from staff's perspective, that caused some confusion for people. The, really the only types of applications under state law that vest to the current regulations at time of building permit are land divisions, so subdivisions and, and a building permit. So adding that line in there about site plans do not vest, when there are a lot of other types of applications that also do not vest, was causing some confusion. So staff's proposing to eliminate that sentence. Can I move on?
Move on.
So this next one is in our concurrency, chapter 1922. And this was a change also sourced out of the 2021 docket. And also, there are some, there's a new state law that has something to say about concurrency and transportation levels of service. And when the city is able to or must deny a permit application based on the transportation level of service declining below the adopted minimum. So I will go to that section because I think it says a little bit more. So 1922 concurrency. So the, the proposed changes are to add in this new section that talks about application requirements. So currently, there's nothing that says, you know, what an applicant needs to provide so that the city can conduct the concurrency review. And so this just adds in a sentence that says that an applicant has to provide what the director has deemed necessary in order to conduct the review. So that typically, you know, is just, is going to be information about the impacts of a project. So, you know, how many, how many trips are going to be generated? how many trips are going to be generated by the public or the, by the project for transportation? You know, how, how much capacity is needed for water and sewer and utilities, et cetera? And then also proposing to add in this line about the cost of conducting the currency test must be borne by the applicant and including reimbursement for the cost if the city needs to use a contracted consultant to, to determine whether concurrency requirements are, are met. And that's also something that was missing in the previous code. So that'll help us make sure that development is, is paying for that, you know, required element of our review.
Quick, quick note. I think reimbursement is a typo on B. There's, there shouldn't be a hyphen there.
No hyphen?
No hyphen. I double checked with Google and Google isn't always right.
Thank you.
Chairman Martin?
Yes, Mr. Mills?
Also on that sentence, it seems that the reimbursement amount is kind of open ended. Would we typically put caveat in there reasonable expenses or a finite cap? Or is it just typically we'd leave it open ended? Whatever the city hires, the applicant has to pay for.
Excuse me. Yeah, typically we'll have, when there's somebody under contract that does these reviews for us, we would have an idea, you know, for what it would cost. So we'd be able to give the applicant that information. But we don't typically, you know, say that there's a maximum amount because, you know, if, if the, if the city was doing the review, it would be a staff person that was spending time and, you know, would cost money to, to do that review. And so it's just recovering that cost from, for hiring out that, that process.
Good, thank you.
So, no, the answer is no. We don't have an upper limit typically. But we like to make sure that people are, you know, that they know kind of the range of what they might be looking at for that. Okay, so still in concurrency. This is just a change to you, so that we're using consistent terms in the chapter. Changing sewer to wastewater. And then also, the, this is the section that I was talking about related to the new state law that prohibits the city from denying a project permit for causing a decline below the adopted level of service for transportation facilities when impacts could be mitigated through active transportation facility improvements. And so I just took the, that section from the state law and put it into our code to make sure that we were compliant with that section.
Can you, sorry, I'm asking so many questions. What exactly is an active transportation facility?
Uh, like sidewalks, bike lanes, transit, no, not transit. Things, active transportation is, are, you know, types of transportation that you are active. So you're, you're moving, you're rolling, you're pedaling.
So a sidewalk is considered a facility?
Mm-hmm. Because your walk, that's for pedestrians. Yep. And I'm sure there'll be a lot more to learn on that topic at our next meeting when we have transpo here as well. This last one is just, I think it's just clarifying this statement to let people know that there is a concurrency review program so that the city staff, you know, follow to make sure that we're conducting the reviews consistently. And then also that, clarifying that the departments that are responsible for providing the concurrency facilities are involved in making those determinations.
I think we're on to permits.
Okay. Nothing to talk about in permits. So we'll go right by that. And then we're into division four, zoning and land use. And there's quite a bit here, but we, we did talk about quite a lot over the last year. So this first one here is a topic that we did talk about last time. The childcare facilities in industrial zones. There was a, there was a request from a property owner to allow, to change the code to allow for daycares in the industrial zone as permitted or a conditional use. And then we talked about the new state law from SB 50509 that was just adopted that requires cities and jurisdictions to permit outright childcare facilities in all zones except for industrial zones. And in industrial zones, they must provide for at least a conditional, conditional use type process to allow for those facilities.
Before you, before you get there, I think there are a number of, you have a number of blued out items on table 1941040. Unless I'm, is that right? Yeah. Yep.
040?
Mm-hmm. Isn't that before the daycare one?
Yes, this is, these ones we have, we have talked about. And so I didn't include them in our list to talk about tonight, but I'm happy to, if you have questions about any of these, happy to talk about them.
Okay. The HAP 2.1.1 says more information will be presented at a subsequent PC discussion of HAP recommendations.
Excuse me. Yes, it does. So I think that had to do with our, our open space map that is being updated as part of this process. And that is, that was included in the conference of plan documents that are out for comment right now. But we can talk more about that maybe at the next meeting.
Okay.
If we want to get into detail on that.
Okay. Everybody's fine. Okay. Will we be talking about things like wetlands and how that impacts on that one?
Um, yeah, so, sorry.
Go ahead.
So the open space map is sort of the sources for the information on the map come from our wetlands, potential wetland and delineated wetland GIS layer. Also our streams, riparian management zones. So it's, it's depicting sort of all of those critical areas on, on the map and showing where they kind of line up and where corridors for habitat or recreation, you know, either exist or maybe there's links that could be created. And so, yes, that, that information, that, that's how that is, is derived is from that, the critical areas information.
Okay. Because I, the reason I'm asking is because I know that there have been public comments related to that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Happy to bring a little more detail back on that. Anything else on this in the residential use tables?
I don't have anything else. Yep.
Okay.
I think we are, the next one looks at the, in CBD, C, MMU, et cetera. Yeah.
Yep, the table 1941050 is permitted uses in our mixed use and industrial zones. So, I think we already talked about, so I was going to go straight to daycare. That's all right. We might have to jump around a little bit in this table just because of the, the order that things are in, in the staff memo. But I guess I could just go through.
I'm just trying to find it right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's in the amendments. It's page 18 of 111. Just in the development code page numbers.
Got it.
Table 1941050.
Yeah. I'm looking for daycare. I don't see daycare.
Sorry. Daycare is on page 20. Did you find it?
Found it.
Okay. So on the, on this one, we had a discussion about this at the last meeting and the sort of conversation at a staff level and looking into this a bit more. The types of childcare facilities, so like onsite daycare facilities, serving a business, you know, providing care for employees', children', would be considered an accessory use under our development regulations. So an access, a used accessory to a permitted, you know, industrial or light industrial use. Accessory uses aren't listed in this table because this is just primary uses in, in the permitted use table. And so the, sort of the opinion of staff was that we don't need to make any changes to this table to comply with the state law because we already allow accessory or onsite childcare facilities in, in these zones. So you couldn't do a, just a dedicated childcare center and that's the primary use of a site, but you could provide onsite care for a business's employees. Just wanted to get feedback from the planning commission on what you thought about that.
Mr. Stoneman is weighing in?
I was saying, I sound, I think that's good.
I do too. Nodding heads.
Great. We will be coming back sometime before 2027 because this state law also says that we need to permit outright daycare facilities in residential zones as well. And so that felt like a little bit heavier lift to include in this, this time around. And since it's not required to be completed during the periodic update, that'll, that'll come back to you.
Can I ask you a quick question on the bottom of that same page?
Yep.
Where it says overnight lodging?
Yes.
I see in the LM zone, what I think is the only conditional use, I, I think it's the only C in the whole, in all the zones that I can find. Is that right?
Yeah, I think so, but I don't know the background on that. Light manufacturing zone is, I did bring a map somewhere in here. I think it's kind of the north part of town. Oh, where'd you go?
Yeah, there, there's a map over here.
It's too far away for me. This, so, what, what did we say? MS?
LM.
LM. Oh, okay.
It's the only conditional, I think it's the only conditional of anything anywhere.
So light manufacturing is kind of this section.
Oh, it's the dark blue.
It's the dark blue along the north.
Yeah.
Portion of the city. So really, this is all, most of it is in the water. And then there's a, a little section right here. So I don't know the background to that. That's interesting to, to point that out.
Because that would be a nice place to have an overnight lodging.
Yeah. Right. Yeah. And it's in shoreline. So, or well, probably the majority of it is in shoreline jurisdiction. And so that is something that we'll probably want to take a look at just to make sure those are consistent. What's allowed in shoreline jurisdiction is also, you know, consistent with what's allowed in, in zoning.
Yeah, it's, it's not a change of anything. It just, it just seemed odd that there is only one thing that's conditional in our whole city.
Yeah. I'm going to track that one down.
But actually, now that I say that, I look here at recreation indoor, there's some conditional uses.
And this table also doesn't include all of the uses. And so I should have explained that better, but in this table, both for the residential and commercial uses, I've only included, I honestly don't know why the overnight lodging is, is in there, but I only included uses that where there was a change proposed for the most part. And so if you actually pulled up the adopted code language on the code publishing site, there are many more uses included in the table and probably more conditional uses.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so daycare, we're good on?
Yep.
Okay, so the next one is indoor recreation in the LM1 zone. So this was a request from a property owner that wanted to, or that requested that indoor recreation be changed from prohibited to permitted use in the light manufacturing one zone. Actually, also in the industrial zone. So two different, two different proposals that were docketed to allow for recreation indoor in the LM1 and industrial zones. So just going back to that map really quick, we can take a look at where those are. So the industrial zone is this area sort of south of, this is, this is 22nd right here. The boundary between marine mixed use and the pink, which is industrial, and the beige, which is CM2. Excuse me. And then this is R, I want to say? PQ, yeah, probably R. So that's the boundary on the west side. So it's, it's the industrial area of town. Lots of warehouses and boat manufacturing and repair and storage and that sort of thing happening there. And then the LM1 zone is down in the southeast part of. And then the LM1 zone is down in the southeast part of town, along Highway 20 and, yeah, along Highway 20 on the north and south sides until you get to the city limits. Actually, there's a little section that's not LM1, but the brown is LM1. So that request was to allow the indoor recreation in those zones. Get to that section now. So I put, I did put a little more information in the draft development regulations in these little explainer boxes, the blue, so I didn't explain that either. So the, in this document, in the draft development regulations, there are these blue boxes with the little I symbol here, and those are not part of the code, those are text boxes basically that are intended to, number one, identify the source of the proposed amendment that is happening in that area, so the, these numbers here, the LEG 2024-21 is a number from the 2025 docket, so it's a way to kind of tie it back to, okay, this is why this is, why we're looking at this, or why we're considering this, because it was proposed by a community member and docketed by council. And here's the file number for that. It will also, if it is a requirement by state law, I identified in these boxes the, the RCW or the, the bill that adopted the legislation. And then sometimes there's just, you know, staff comments or just trying to provide more context or recommendations in those boxes, so that's kind of how those work. And then the rest of the document, as I explained, the, we don't have the complete text of Title 19 in this draft, we've only included the sections where changes are proposed or have been requested. And also sometimes we'll include, you know, sections on before and after just to provide some additional context when you're looking at this document. So that's how this is formatted. And if you want to see the full code, then go to the municipal code online and then you can see all of it. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Questions?
Oops.
Go ahead and ask him.
Libby, so this is essentially like a proposal, right? We're gonna go over it in the future and make a decision on it, if we're gonna do that?
Yep, that's the, the intent is that we're kind of walking through, this has been released to the public, so it's out for public comment now. Planning commission has talked about a lot of these changes already over the last year. I'm, in the last meeting and this meeting, I'm trying to point out some of the new amendments or ones that we haven't talked about before and just going over those to make sure that you all are, you know, know what's in this document and the reasons and can provide your, your.
Yeah, I, I just have specific feedback because it's, you know, for a parent of a younger child, very successfully, they've been used as gymnastics and some of these other recreations, because most of that happens after key hours that the industrials are in their main operation. So taking kids to gymnastics and let it be Mount Vernon, Burlington, up in Bellingham and all of these zones, we've always, I think, the main occupants have been after kids get out of school and weekends, so I don't, just as a, as a comment that I've actually experienced use in other cities, I, we never had any experience with having conflict.
And as a note about procedures, as we go through this, we would love your feedback and kind of get a nod, yes or no, any deep conversations, like if we, if you're prepared to do it now, that way, you know, we don't have to do it later. Right now, we're walking through it, so this is the ideal time to provide that kind of feedback, so thank you, that's exactly what we're looking for, is your sentiments and feelings and, and, that makes it sound like it's really just about feelings, but your sentiments, your comments and, and how you'd like to see this crafted, like now is definitely the time to talk about it, so when we have a public hearing, we don't have to come back and go back through all the individual ones that you didn't get enough to talk about. But, I mean, we will do that, but if we can do more of it now, that'd be, you know, better use of our time.
I do have a comment about something that's not being proposed as a change. It's under adult concessions. I was actually surprised that we allow it in this city in a number of places.
I, I believe we're required, cities are required to not outright ban it.
Really? And then, okay, I'll keep quiet.
If you go to that code section, the reference 1944-090B1, there is several pages of additional regulations and zone-specific standards for that particular use, so they're not, you know, just permitted with no standards, but.
But, but required, like permitted by law? You would, you would, anyway.
There's probably a case or something that.
Yeah, back in, around two, early 2000s, I believe, where the state, you know, either there was a state or a court finding says you can't completely ban them, so what cities generally do is have a lot of restrictions and generally in an industrial zone with a large buffer from various types of uses and then you get these little pockets of small areas where they might be allowed.
Well, we have it allowed even in the commercial zone.
If you go to that, that code section, it has use-specific standards that can further limit location within those zones, and I think that might be the case here. I don't know the specifics because I don't often have to look at that, that section, but there are, I, like I think there's, you know, spacing requirements, like minimum distances from public schools, maybe, I might be making it up now, but.
Or daycares in the industrial zone?
I think John might be, maybe pulling up more information, but happy to.
If there's any way we can change that, I would be definitely in favor of making whatever changes are legally allowed. And I think that that would fit with the sentiment of our community as well.
Well, I'm, I am happy to look into that and bring back.
So we updated this in 2019, we'd have to chase down what led to that, that's about the timeframe that all the jurisdictions were making changes to this, it was before my time.
And my jurisdiction.
So I just heard, you know, like how others have created their, their development regulations and why, so I can't say specifically that it were required to allow them somewhere, but that is my strong recollection of what I've learned.
And if that, and if that's the case, that, that's the case, but if it's possible to limit the, you've got four, four places that it could be allowed in our city. And maybe there's a way to limit that somewhat.
I'll bring some, bring back some more information on that, try to identify the reasons that we have that permitted.
So while we're talking, we were on the topic of indoor recreation and there's a bunch of notes here, just kind of trying to get us back on track for what we were talking about, we were looking for some planning commission discussion and guidance on recreation indoor, Libby could probably try to go into detail about, you know, which of these we think are appropriate and not, it sounds like you've weighed in a little bit already, so I'd like to hear more about whether we restrict the different types of uses, or if we just allow all indoor type recreations. Libby's better prepared to, to talk about that, I was just trying to bridge it to that.
I'll use one of my, one of the slides that I wasn't going to, because in the, so the indoor recreation category of uses in the code includes a really wide range of indoor recreation uses, so the adult concessions, as you mentioned, the, you know, bowling alley, shooting range, swimming pools, skating rinks, so all, all kinds of different types of facilities. And so I think we're looking for input on, you know, whether there are certain types that we should limit, the, certain types of recreational use that these zones should be limited to in the industrial and LM1 zone to, to make sure that, you know, the, the rest of the land is, is preserved for the, the purposes of, of the zone, so just trying to make sure that the, the, the purpose of the zone isn't overtaken by recreational uses.
And just to clarify, you've put it in here as a possibility in two of the zones, I'm assuming that means that the planning department thinks it's fine?
Um, the, the planning department thinks it's under, with the size limit, so limiting the size, but really truly are looking for, for input, you know, some of the things to think about are that, you know, the industrial zone is, also has frontage on Fidalgo Bay, so, you know, getting close to the water and we know that that's an important, you know, goal for the city is to protect those working waterfront, you know, places where you can do that type of work, which the industrial zone is one of those. And.
So we could have an adult concession on the working waterfront then?
Um, I, I don't.
You're gonna look into it, it's okay.
So adult concessions are typically put in industrial zones because it's away from the public eye.
And I think there's enough, you know, like spacing restrictions on, and, you know, it's, it's not possible for them to just pop up on every corner because of all of the additional use or zone-specific restrictions, if you get, dig deeper into the code for adult concessions. So I mean, I guess, you know, like of all of these uses that are part of the indoor recreation category, you know, are there, should we start small and only allow, you know, certain types, like the, I know we've had a lot of interest and we, there is a actually policy change in the comp plan, see if I can find that. So in our comp plan, update policies in the industrial and manufacturing areas, there was an addition to policy 9.4, limit non-industrial uses to those that are complementary to industrial activities in terms of access, circulation, public safety and other activities. For example, ground floor retail, indoor, recreation and daycare to serve industrial employees and/or located within walking distance of commercial and high-density residential zones can be complementary.
I was, Chairman Martin?
Yep.
I'm just having a hard time trying to envision taking this big, I mean, I think incremental steps from, unless I, someone painted a different picture, I mean, if, is it, is the idea that this would be usage for people that work in that area primarily or just vacant space like you're referring, that could be utilized for like, I've seen like a CrossFit gym or things like that in the area that maybe just is gonna get a good use out of it? The whole, this whole list seems crazy, you know, like to do all that stuff on the waterfront and be able to preserve what we have, so I'm just trying to envision, with the, the person that proposed, I don't really know the details of that, was it, was the idea behind it just limited usage? And then how would, like outright permitting it versus conditional use permit, like what's the thought process behind that with this?
So this was, this is largely staff-driven.
Okay.
It's very common, as Commissioner Ryan pointed out, to see CrossFit gyms.
Yeah.
And dance studios and those types of things that we largely have under our indoor, indoor recreation use category. And so we wanted to explore making it possible for those types of uses, but as we're looking at the list here, frankly, we're like, well, does it make sense to have a swimming pool there? I don't know, let's have the conversation with the planning commission and see what they think. Does it make sense to have a skating rink there or a miniature golf facility? So if we can kind of come up with some ways, i, i, if the planning commission feels like some of these uses probably aren't allowed there, we, we appreciate that, but we also feel like some of these are probably typical uses that we see in other communities and we, we think maybe it's worth exploring to allow some of them, so if we can come out, if you want, let's have the conversation and say, maybe some of these we do allow and some of these we don't allow as, as permitted uses.
I mean, I think we have several that since we already have facilities in the city that we could just eliminate off the bat, so we're not doubling up, like we have a swimming pool, we have a movie theater. So if we needed to reduce the list, I think what other amenities are existing in the city in those area, in other areas, so this way, if there are people that need to get into, use that area for what it's proposed for, not just recreation, and that reduces those options.
But in a free market society, you let, you let the free market dictate, not, not, not allow, not, not just narrow things that way. Just out of curiosity, the, the property along the waterfront around 17th or so, how is that zoned?
That's MMU.
Yeah, between 17th and 22nd is marine mixed use.
Okay. Because I, I have a copy of the docket here and I see the parties that were requesting this in the docket, and I just wonder about that.
They also own land in the industrial area, the same applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, yes, so they, so they own land in the industrial zone and then the light manufacturing zone property owner is also, should be in your package somewhere, but that was Mr. Bowman and he owns property that he wanted to be able to do.
Event.
Indoor recreation. Small event recreation type situation.
Yeah, I see that.
But other than that, you know, they're like, um, yes, I know that parents have to drive out to Mount Vernon and Burlington and Bellingham to do a lot of the gymnastics and, you know, children's after-school activities because they're. and, you know, children's after-school activities, because there, you know, aren't very many opportunities in Anacortes to do that. And I, I don't know that it's all because of this code that doesn't allow for that type of use in these zones, but it would, you know, help to, to open up some more possibilities.
Would it be helpful if we went back to that list and maybe just went through down? And I'd be happy to weigh in on, you know, some of the things that I'm thinking. So, for example, adult concessions, that would be happening in the evening outside of the hours when the light manufacturing work would be happening. So that would be, it would seem to at least be consistent zoning-wise. Similar with Billiard Hall, or a bingo, bingo parlor, ten, bowling alley feels more like a commercial area thing, but I don't have strong feelings. Convention centers would, I think, not be consistent, because you don't want large groups of people coming down during the day, you know, for a work conference and getting in the way of boats being pulled up and down the street. Dance martial arts studios, again, evening, like you, like Commissioner Ryan had mentioned, those feel appropriate. Similar with health clubs, when they're smaller, they don't have a lot of people coming and going, or it might be something like a CrossFit gym that's after work. So that seems appropriate. Shooting range, I don't have a strong feeling about. That does feel like more of an industrial, like, manufacturing-type use anyway. Sports academy, again, typically, kids are gonna be available after school. I don't know how summer plays into something like this, though. Miniature golf, I don't know. That seems more like a commercial, not an industrial neighborhood type of thing. Movie theater, again, I, I feel like that's more of a commercial-type use and not really an industrial zone-type use. Same with skating rink, swimming pool. Extreme sports facilities, we often see trampoline facilities that need a big warehouse. I think that would be, you know, something like that, or a ropes thing. And so that would probably be appropriate also. So that's my quick glance through that. Arena, I would not, I think I skipped over that. Amusement center, games, game arcade, probably not. Someplace you want kids going on their own, on their bikes. Arena, large amounts of people coming into industrial zone at unknown hours, doesn't seem appropriate.
I like it. I don't know the rest of you. Mr. Mills?
I, I guess I can't, I'm not prepared to comment on the individual list, item by item, but rather, you know, by our zoning laws, we don't dictate what gets built. We only dictate what doesn't get built. And then, having said that philosophically, I'm more inclined to lean with a very broad scope in terms of what can be done, but try to have more fingerprints on it by having a lot of those items be conditional use permits rather than permitted. So rather than try to restrict it by not saying it's not available at all, I'd rather have some of those things that are more borderline be CUPs, so that they're possible, but not guaranteed.
What about the rest of you?
Yeah, it's hard to go through the list specifically right now without more information, but I think there's some that just obviously make more sense. Based on your description of it, I think that, you know, again, using facilities for CrossFit gym, or gymnastics, things like that, seems to make sense. Some of the other ones are a little bit more questionable as to how it's approached. Yeah, like, I kind of like what Mike said. I think that some of these you'd want to be more conditional use permit, permitted versus just outright permitted. But again, I don't have any good examples in this moment of what other cities are doing, so maybe I'm off there.
I like the idea of making them more conditional approval on these, because they are, for the most part, don't fit the main reason for the zones. And so, it's not that they can't happen, but more conversation and notification of, you know, surrounding neighbors, I think, would be a good idea here. And just, I'm on my horse about the adult concessions, because I'm noticing that it's allowed in four places, and the shooting range is allowed in one.
I guess we'll come back to this one?
Yeah.
Sorry, what was that?
Let's just come back to this one, so we can move on with the docket.
So I'm inclined to make some recommendations, have staff make some recommendations.
Yes.
I'm kicking around, just off the top of my head, is possibly changing the recreation indoor use category definitions to be like a type, category one and category two, and then we can, that'd be an easy way for us to split these apart and say, you know, then it sounds like, you know, category one would be the ones that were permitted, and category two would be the ones that the planning commission isn't so sure seems terribly appropriate, so let's make those conditional uses.
Yep. Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, and then, and, and, I mean, just something to chew on, would it be also one of those, okay, well, what is the percentage of occupancy, or of what's available, when we start narrowing down where we have a number of recreational uses in those areas, and it's limiting the vacancies for its intended purpose? So say we have 10 units, and all of a sudden, we're like, okay, cool, five just filled up with recreational use.
That's a little challenging for staff to, I appreciate the concept. I think tracking something like that gets really challenging, because...
Oh, I understand. I was just, just thinking about, so we can still maintain some part use, but then I guess when we get down to that, that's a conditional situation.
If we look at the bigger picture of economic development, and, and we think about, you know, a short supply of space, but we want to maximize economic development, it could be that that would be one of the criteria that you divide into the type one and type two, maybe.
I think, you know, so they're protecting the amount of industrial land available for industrial uses.
Right.
Yeah. And that, that would, that would actually, you know, thinking through that lens, I would be inclined to probably, anything at all borderline, make conditional use.
It is a balancing act, though.
It is.
Because if you have space that's just underutilized, and sitting there vacant, and you can have sales tax generated, and people finding a use there, great, but then you don't want to take away some of your industrial opportunity. So it is a balance.
Okay, we've probably...
I, I raised my hand. I don't know if anybody saw.
No.
I concur with, with Commissioner Courier. There all seems like you need, I think you want to protect the industrial or the purpose, but if, if there's a, like, a density where you're not, you're not generating, or you have vacancy, you need to have the, have the flexibility to have those types of businesses move in. Because I think there's still a demand for those things in Anacortes.
I'm sorry, Mr. McCombs, I, I don't know if I have, well, I don't know if I have the opportunity to actually see if you're raising your hand. I don't think I do.
You don't.
Yeah.
I'll just speak up. Thanks.
That's fine.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not able to see that either.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a hand check right there. If you guys can see that.
Oh, there you are.
Hand down.
Okay. I guess I'll try to check that periodically.
Just, just speak up, Mr. McCombs.
No worries. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to go to the conditional use permit criteria, just so you could take a look at that, because these are the criteria if, if we are making a use, a conditional use, that would need to be satisfied to issue a conditional use permit. So there are still criteria that apply, and if a proposed use meets the criteria, then the city has to approve the permit. And so it would be important to think about, you know, what types of impacts are we trying to avoid, you know, kind of get more, maybe not tonight, but into the details about what types of conflicts we're trying to avoid and how we might mitigate those. Does that make sense to everyone? Does, conditional use permit, this is our criteria. And sometimes there's ways, you know, instead of a conditional use permit, if there's a specific issue that you're trying to address, you just say, okay, this type of use is allowed, provided, you know, this special condition applies. And so a conditional use permit, you know, be permitted outright, subject to the development regulations or performance standards. So just wanted to point that out, hopefully not complicate things too much. So I guess we'll be bringing back more information on that one.
I think we've got planning commission, we understand the planning commission's direction on that, so we'll, we'll bring something back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the next one, is also still in the same, in the permitted uses table, and it is general service and self-storage. So this was a request from community, MJB, to allow heavy service and self-service storage in the industrial zone. And so we've got, I guess, might be up here.
You skipped over the retail sales one. Oh wait, no, never mind. I see. That one's next. Sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so still in the table, request to permit heavy service in the industrial zone. And so here's the I for industrial zone, and it seemed as though that type of use to staff could be compatible with the purpose of, of the industrial zone. I have a, on my slide here, sorry for jumping around so much. I did, oh. Doesn't look like it made it into the PowerPoint, so I'm sorry. I had the, so heavy service could be compatible with the zone's purpose of manuf, okay, good, manufacturing and closely related uses in areas with existing industrial uses. That's excerpt from the purpose of the industrial zone. And this particular type of use, the heavy service use, includes a minimum of 15,000 square feet of outdoor activity. So it is sort of a heavier, you know, industrial-type use that could be consistent with that, with that particular zone. So staff recommended permitting that particular use. I had a definition for that somewhere.
Okay, I don't see any comments, so that's probably fine.
Moving along. In the self-service storage, for that one, here it is, down near the end of the table. So in general, the staff's recommendation is to avoid the self-service storage, because it's really more of a residential and commercial-type activity with low job density, and so not really appropriate for the industrial zone, in staff's opinion.
I would concur.
Mr. Courier?
Yep.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well.
All hands nodding.
Okay, next page. So I don't know how we're, how we're feeling timewise, but these next ones are all related to the marine mixed-use zone, and the bonus incentives for increasing building height in that, in that zone. Are we, do we want to talk about that tonight, or save that for later?
The next one is, is on the docket number 18. Amend the MS zone to permit outright retail.
Oh, did I miss one?
Yeah.
That's the...
Working from the, the other document, so on page 22.
Right.
Amendments to the table, same table in 1941 that we've been working on.
I might have inadvertently not included this in our staff memo, the one, this one, the LEG 202418. So I'm sorry about that. Somehow that dropped off. But the, the request, or the docketed item was to amend the MS zone to permit outright retail up to 6,000 square feet, to ensure that, if there is a replacement of the marine supply building, that it's consistent with the Main Street Downtown Core. So this is a change that is intended to just apply in a very specific area, to ensure that the, sort of the existing aesthetic and, you know, Main Street character of that section of Commercial Avenue on the west side, between Second and Third, is, is maintained. The manufact, it's zone manufacturing and shipping, and so that requires a 10-foot setback, and not, you know, is, is really not consistent with what's there right now. We've heard from people that they like, you know, what's there now, and would like to see that continued. So this is just a change that would help that happen.
Shouldn't, shouldn't that specific one have the same code as the Olson Building? That's the block.
The, the same zoning?
Yeah.
It could. I, I don't, we haven't discussed that with the Port of Anacortes, who owns that property. But if, if that was something that they were interested in, then that, that could be an option as well.
Right now, that's not a proposal that's been put out for public review.
I mean, at a minimum, I think it's a good idea to maintain the character of that building, but, and that's the intent of this, right? Is to make, keep it without having to change the setbacks and change it much as time.
Yeah, just to ensure that if, if there ever were, had to be redevelopment, that the development is consistent and kind of follows what's there right now, in terms of form and...
I think we need to...
Except that that's different from what's being proposed for the Olson Building, on the other end of the block. on the other end of the block.
Well, there's a proposal for the Olson Building to be, that zone to be changed to CBD. And that's consistent with what the property owner is interested in that change. The, these other proposals affecting the MS zone are essentially achieving a similar effect without rezoning.
Mr. Ryan?
So, but is this the more of a broad stroke here where anywhere in the MS zone, we can now do this versus when like, hey, what we're trying to do is we're trying to take the Marine Supply Building and we want to rebuild it and it's approximately the size versus like, hey, we're just going to broad stroke this and any of the, anywhere in that zone, we can build retail up 6,000 square feet without going, okay, we know we're talking about a specific area or a broader-
Sorry. This proposal is just applicable to the ground floor abutting Commercial Avenue south of Second Street in the MS zone. So that's a very specific area.
I mean, I'm in favor of maintaining the look and feel at a minimum, you know? Again, not knowing what the intent is for the building and the usage. Because it, because it's essentially, it feels like one building, but it's split, right? Is what we're talking about. Half the building is a different zone and trying to maintain the integrity of the look. Am I right with that?
Well, all the, the entire block or the parcels fronting on Commercial Avenue are currently zoned MS. One of the proposals before you in the, in this draft is to change just the Olson Building parcels designation from MS to CBD. Because we know what that, what the use of that property is intended to be. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. So, so that is before you right now. There is not a proposal to change the zoning for the parcel just to the north, which is owned by the Port of Anacortes. And that's the Marine Supply Building. But there are these code amendments that are intended to try, if redevelopment happens, to maintain the, the character so, of, of that block. And so allowing for retail right now, you know, you can't, or it's only a conditional use up to, or it's a conditional use, sorry, for 5,000 to 25,000. This particular change would make it a permitted use, make retail on the ground floor a permitted use up to 6,000 square feet, which is sort of consistent with what's right there right now. So it's making, permitting retail use in that location more straightforward, easier, not having to go through a conditional permit, conditional use permit. Is that, sorry, it's kind of a long explanation.
I agree with Mr. Currier that as much as we can keep the flavor of that block, the look of that block, the better. But in my mind, again, I'm looking at two things. One is the Marine Hardware Store. The other is the Olson Building, which we were told we needed to consider changing to the CBD because in the current setting, it's non-conforming. The question is, if, if we make this apply to the Marine Hardware, then now it's no longer non-conforming for the Olson Building either. Is that right?
That would be right. However, there was other reasons to change the Olson Building zoning that were unrelated to the block frontage purposes.
And-
And that's because, you know, the intent of the Housing For All money that the, the community passed for the intent of reusing that property for affordable housing. Affordable housing was much more challenging to fit into the MS zone. So that's why changing it to, changing the Olson Building to CBD makes it much more possible to do affordable housing on, in, in that CBD zone. Which, that is not the intent to do any housing-related anything on the Marine Hardware, so, Marine Hardware Building. Yeah. So that's not, that's why there's no move to change the Marine Hardware Building property to Central Business District.
And just to clarify then, the, the twofold purpose is to give the port the ability to convert that and use that as retail and easier, you're doing that if that's how they choose to use that property and then also to maintain the character of the building.
Yeah.
Where now, if they wanted to do that and they wanted to use retail, is there a conflict there? They would have the ability to-
It's just to replace what's, if they, if they had to do it and replace what's there with something new, then the, they would have to get a conditional use permit just to replace what, the retail space that's there right now. So this is increasing the threshold for what retail is allowed outright in that zone, in that location.
Yeah, I guess I still would be in favor of this.
Keep going?
Yes, keep going or yes, you have an opinion? I think it's worth looking at that block again. Just from a, just from the point of view of a citizen and the flavor of that downtown, I understand the need and the plan for affordable housing with the Olson Building. And it's a worthy plan. I'm just afraid that it's, it's going to be remodeled and look like something that doesn't fit in that block. I guess that's a worry.
So the CBD also has additional design standards beyond what the MS zone has too. So that, that's yet another reason to rezone the Olson Building is to make sure that it's rebuilt looking similar to the downtown feel.
Does it have the same parking requirements?
Yes, although we'll get to the parking requirements for affordable housing proposal here shortly.
Okay, well. I think we should move on. I've said what I want to say.
All right. Did we, Mr. Coleman?
Yeah.
Did we want to talk about the marine mixed use or I could?
If there's other stuff that's not the marine mixed use, let's see if we can get to those first.
Okay. Okay, so the next, the next three are all marine mixed use, requesting changes to, actually, one of them also involves CBD. But the next two are marine mixed use, requesting changes to different bonus density incentives that are outlined. And so let's talk about that one later. And then the horizontal step-back requirement for CBD and MMU zones, we can come back, come back to that one as well. So the next item here is the specific use standards for residential, for residential uses. So the specific standards for the, I'm starting to not be able to talk. Sorry. Let's go to that code section and I wanted to talk about-
So we're, we're skipping 1942 form and intensity standards?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I seem to have confused myself and lost my place here. 1943, 115. Okay, rooming house. So we've skipped down to chapter 1943, which is the residential use standards. And so it includes all of the different housing types and the specific standards, design and other standards that apply to those types of development, development of those types of housing. And so one of the types of housing that is currently in our code is a rooming house. And with the, with the changes that have been purpo-, or the changes to state law that talk about the city's ability or prohibiting cities from regulating the total number of related or unrelated people living together in a dwelling unit, sort of conflicts with the, with our term and definition of a rooming house. And so it was recognized by staff that we probably need to address that. And the other thing is that the new housing type that we're required to include under the state law, co-housing, or co-living housing, is very similar to the definition of a, of a rooming house. So there's a little bit of trying to figure out, do we need that term still? Mr. Ryan, do you have a, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so I mean, because it were, it sounds like single-family residence, but wasn't the Keystone Building at one time a rooming house?
I don't know. Oh, well, yeah, it, it could have been, like I said-
It was considered, I believe it's been, it was considered a rooming house, you know, and had the showers and community showers and cooking in little areas. But that was not a single family, so.
So the, sorry.
So I was, I'm just kind of going like, well, that was a commercial space or not a single-family or whatever.
Yeah, so we're, we're making our code consistent with the state law that does require us to have co-living as a, as an allowed use, which is sort of also a, a rooming house. So that's kind of the old, the older term for that type of living situation. But we've added the, here, I'll see if I can, co-living.
Well, I, I think some of the verbiage is, has to stay in there because there's regulations that use those terms. If, I remember when we were speaking to Marcus, that consultant that we had, about changing some verbiage at one point.
So the-
And I'm trying to remember which one it was.
Yeah. Co-living housing in residential zones. You might recall that it's, the city is required to allow it in residential zones that allow for at least six multifamily units. And so that's why we said it would be permitted in the R4 and R4A zones. Rooming houses are currently conditional use in the R3, R3A and Old Town zones and permitted outright in the R4 and R4A. And the, the guidance from the Department of Commerce, who put together the guidance on co-living, said if a jurisdiction currently has a, a use type that is similar to, you know, what is now we're calling co-living, but you're allowing it in a lower-density zone, so lower-density residential zone, you should try to keep that housing type so that you can continue to offer that type of housing in lower-density zones. And so that's why it was thought, okay, well, we can, you know, try to make a distinction between rooming house and, and co-living and still allow rooming houses up to, you know, outright in, in these particular residential zones. Sorry, that wasn't, that was, I'm struggling with my explanation. So if we go to the specific standards, I guess it's still a question in staff's mind whether we need that, whether we still need that term, rooming house. Because we can't regulate the number of people that live together, unrelated or unrelated. And so how is this type of use different than somebody that just owns a house and, you know, decides to rent out rooms to different people and they all live there together? And we don't regulate that.
In your definitions of rooming house, you do regulate not more than nine borders with no more than nine sleeping rooms.
And that's, that is our current regulation that I am questioning whether that complies with the-
I see.
With the law. So I'll have to look into that further.
I got a question, I got a statement.
Okay.
So, so on that, so we just would have to, I guess we would have to make sure that we, if, are we trying to get rid of the term rooming house altogether? Because then we're just not going to have units that are considered rooming houses. And my only concern is if there's something that somehow falls in that category, because it is also defined underneath property codes, they use that as reference to buildings and then-
Like building code?
Yeah, property maintenance codes. So it does specifically use that term. So I'm going, well, for some odd reason, do we run across it where they go, well, it, no, it, it actually defines it and falls into this category, but like, we've now removed it and so like, well, then how are we going to govern that?
Yeah, no, I, I-
It just, because, you know, I mean, just in case we get the sore thumb of people that we're dealing with, you know, an issue because of it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'll, I'll have to look at what that, what that code says. I'm not aware of that, but I understand the, I understand the point you're bringing up.
We can talk later on that one then, that's, that's fine.
I think the, the bottom line is here that staff needs to do a little bit more work on this to make a strong recommendation, one way or another. And so I'm happy to bring that back.
I, I can share that definition with you later and where I found that.
Thank you.
Mr. Currier?
Yeah, was the idea though, that from looking at that, you would keep, you wouldn't, you'd keep the rooming houses in those three other areas. You would add co-living in the other two areas. Essentially, it's the same thing in five different zones.
Yeah.
And just trying to figure out the easiest way to sync that up.
Right, yes. And, and just trying to figure out whether there is, is even a, a point to having other than, you know, not wanting to make inconsistencies, but if there is a need to have that extra housing type when, if I think about it, you know, somebody that is just renting rooms out in their house, there's no permitting process that they go through, you know, to, to be able to do that. Unless it's short-term rental, if it's less than 30, 30 days, then that wouldn't be permitted. But to do a long-term rental of individual rooms in a dwelling unit is not something that's regulated by the city, which is essentially sort of what a rooming house was intended to be.
Up to 30 units. It, in one of the definitions, that a rooming house can be up to 30 units. But then, I mean, I think at that time, we were removing it from residential, so for just.
Sorry, can you say that again?
I said, in one of the definitions, a rooming house is considered up to, you know, one of these cohab living situations that would have up to 30 units.
In the, in the Anacortes Municipal Code?
No, in the, in the property codes, maintenance codes.
Okay.
Yeah, not more than 30 sleeping rooms are provided for compensation. And I don't think we would have that in residential.
Right. No, there's no, in the areas, like the mixed use and the commercial zones where co-living is allowed, there's no maximum density or maximum number of units. So I'll have to look at, you know, what that definition is and make sure that there aren't any conflicts and bring back a better recommendation for you all about how to deal with rooming houses.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So the division.
Libby? So we were just in, which section were we just in?
1943, 120, I was kind of jumping around, though.
Yeah, so did we want to go back to 1942, 170? That talks about MS zone storefront block frontage, since we were talking about that the previous topic.
Sorry, what section?
1942, 170? 150, sorry.
What was that, John? I can't hear you.
1942.
1942, 150, setback modifications for the MS zone. That's, that's the companion piece to the hardware, to the Marine Hardware Building. Yeah, that one.
Oh, yeah. So in the, excuse me, in the Marine Manufacturing and Shipping Zone, there's a minimum 10-foot setback. And so in order to allow replacement of a Marine Hardware-type building, the, this special allowance for setback to zero feet is proposed to be added into the setback modifications portion of the code. So in the MS zone, development of new building on sites with storefront block frontage designation must follow the storefront block frontage requirements for building placement instead of the 10-foot setback stated in the. That table is the form and intensity table that talks about all the different setbacks and heights and whatnot. So it's another one that's intended to achieve what we've been talking about, maintaining the character of that block with any sort of redevelopment, allowing that to be put back the way that it currently is.
Ms. Curry, we have design standards on all of that? For those areas, so this way we can maintain that look and feel?
So in the CBD, there are more design standards that are applicable. In the manufacturing and shipping zone, the, there aren't as many. But the application of the storefront block frontage kind of dictates building placement and, you know, the pedestrian zone window transparency requirements. And so by, and I haven't talked about that section yet either, because that's in Division 6, I think. But another associated amendment is to extend the storefront block frontage designation. So all of that kind of in combination achieves that.
And then would it be, is, if they're going to use it as retail, could we just say, well, then it falls under retail design standards? Which, in that area? Well, I mean, it's not that area, but it is that area, because it's commercial? I mean, I'm making sure that we're.
You're asking about applying the different.
Yeah, I mean, just to make sure that, like, I mean, how do we make sure that it is carried over? I mean, we'd go, we'd hope that somebody would be like, yeah, of course, that's what we're going to do. But just to make sure that it does carry through if they choose to knock that down and bring it back as retail.
So to be clear, what you're asking is, should we have design standards on that same block?
Yes, sir.
That we're talking about changing the block frontage and what we had previously talked about allowing commercial use?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we understand. Is that, is that something the planning commission would like us to address?
Yes. That was a look and feel thing, look about that, about that building, to make sure that those design standards are carried through.
Yeah, I mean, I think the purpose is to, as long as it supports the purpose, which is to keep it looking the way we, it is, or similar to that, keeping the integrity of it, the proposal of zero street setback makes sense. I don't know as to design standards and if that makes a difference to have that allowed. If that makes a difference? I guess a question would be, do you feel like what's being recommended is something that would help further support the goal? Or is it necessary?
Yeah, that's why it was proposed.
Beyond the setback, though, like, to bring additional design standards?
It looks like Libby's pulled up some design standard information, so.
Oh.
So I think that the, by application of the storefront block frontage standards, that is going to address the design of the ground level of any new building. So that's the most important part, you know, to maintain that, the same feel of that, of that section. I'll have to, and so basically, it talks about, you know, building placement, floor-to-ceiling height, retail space depth, building entrances, window transparency requirements. So all of those things would apply to the ground floor. But then as we go up, I think that there might not be as many design standards applicable. So we could bring back that information and let you know what the difference would be, what the differences would be.
I think, I think that might be helpful. I don't know.
I think, yeah, anything that accomplishes, within reason, that accomplishes the goal of keeping the character of those buildings, I think, is favorable.
Although, although we did recommend, I think, five stories. Is that right?
That's just for the, that's just for Central Business District.
Oh. Okay.
That would not be, that would not apply to the manufacturing and shipping zone? Or the Marine Hardware Building.
Yeah, okay. That makes a difference.
Okay, have we had enough on that one? Or I will bring back some more information about the applicable design standards and what that would look like?
Yes, we'll circle back. Thank you. And Chair?
Mr. Mills?
It seems like we're getting into kind of an over-engineered process here. Is this being triggered by, and I missed this point last week when we were talking about the changing the zoning. I thought we were changing the zoning, or proposing changing the zoning for the entire block between second and third. I didn't realize we were splitting, proposing splitting the block on the zoning change. But because we're splitting the block, is that what's creating all of this complexity of design standards, is because we're splitting the block?
Seems like it.
Yeah, it would be a lot more straightforward if they had the same zoning. But I think that, you know, it's different property ownership and, you know, there are reasons, you know, that a port would want to maintain flexibility with having a manufacturing and shipping zone applied as well, so.
Every property owner has their own thoughts.
Yeah.
That's where we have zoning.
I think we're primarily, or at least the intent of the amendment that was docketed is to try to, as I keep saying, repeating, maintain the character of the, just the commercial side, so the rest of the parcel, you know, extends back. And so, yeah, I mean, it would be more straightforward, but that's not what's being proposed right now.
I think keeping the block with the same zoning is not incompatible with trying, the objective of trying to retain the look of the street. That just seems to me like we're making it more complex than it needs to be and driven by different ownership of, on the same block.
Was, was the docketed item 2024-18, was that brought forth by staff?
Uh, no.
By the port?
Uh, well, sorry, 2024-18, is that the, so requires zero-foot setback? Is that the one we're talking about?
Yeah, I'm, yes, in.
No, it was not staff, it was, we can pull it up here. I don't have the.
I, I have it, but it doesn't say where it came from. Not that that necessarily makes any difference.
I don't have an easy way to get, unfortunately, to that ordinance without, or resolution, without going out of this location, but I.
Okay, I'm just following up on what Mr. Mills is saying about. It does seem like we're doing kind of gyrations to split the zoning in the same block and yet try and keep things looking similar to the way they are.
Yeah. Well, and, sorry. It's possible that there's a, that there's a better way, a more straightforward way to do this that, you know, staff hasn't thought of. And so, you know, we can, we can take another look at that.
Are you putting your hand up here?
Yes, I'm really, I do a lot of raising my hand and nobody sees, it's just habit.
Mr. Ryan, you are recognized.
Thank you. That's, is that under the control of the port right now?
Sorry?
Is that under the port's authority?
Yes, owned by the port.
So then rezoning that would remove it from port's authority?
No, I don't think so, no.
Okay.
No.
No, that's just a question, if we go, cool, now it's not a marine-zoned. Thank you.
I think this one might have been. Councilmember Walters. There was a, yeah, a memo that had a bunch of different proposals, and council decided to docket some of them and not others. And so one of them is related to this topic. So there's more description of the intent in this document.
If that's the case, it would be helpful to figure out the intent, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, it's to make sure that any replacement is consistent with the existing feeling in the main street core. There's probably multiple different ways to go about doing that. And, you know, possibly what's, staff has proposed is not the most straightforward. So we're happy to look at that.
Mr. Courier?
I mean, yeah, and I mean, it seems like this would work, you know, just acknowledging that, you know, like, the port does, I get they're wanting to have flexibility. I get that the constituents of this, or the people, the citizens of this city want to keep the look and the feel, myself included, down there. And then the, you know, Affordable Housing Group has to have different flexibility, and they're still trying to maintain that. And then you have a building that's just in poor shape, both those buildings. And it's like, it would be easy to find ourselves in a situation where another historic building was taken apart and dismantled, and we have a whole different look down there. And so, I mean, it seems like it accomplishes the goal, but it is a little clumsy, and we're flotting around with stuff. But, you know, maybe there's a better solution, but I appreciate the effort of it. It makes sense to me, but, yeah, if you have another idea, I don't know what it would be.
Not off the top of my head, but I can think about it.
All right, it's, it's five after eight, and I can see tired eyes here. Is there another, a good stopping place?
Oh, yes, so.
Get through a few more or something?
I'm sorry.
Maybe get through a few more?
Sure. And we'll skip Division 5, and, yeah, there's only a few more if we want to try and get through Division 6. So we've got a couple more MJB. Maybe we talk about all of those together at the next meeting. Some more design standard changes, actually, in Division 6. And then these final two relate to parking. So maybe we could talk about that, and then that looks like the end of my list. Does that seem okay? Okay. Yeah. All right, so parking. So the first one is related to guest parking. And this was one of the Housing Action Plan recommended strategies for code amendments. And actually, on this particular one, we may have talked about this one already. Staff recommended retaining for guest parking the current standards for middle housing, because much of the city where middle, so duplexes and triplexes could be located, does not have frequent or convenient public transit service.
Yeah.
And so the Housing Action Plan proposal was to kind of standardize the number of parking spaces for those middle housing types, and maybe even reduce them a little bit. But staff hasn't, to date, you know, heard people having problems meeting those requirements, because you are allowed to use or to count on-street parking that's adjacent to the property as part of your guest parking, fulfilling guest parking requirements. So we haven't really seen a need to change that at this point. And so the recommendation was to keep, keep that as is.
Sounds good. Mr. Mills?
A question that I should already know the answer to. When it comes to the math of implementation, if you've got 1.4 per unit and there's two units, 2.8, is the answer then two or three?
Three.
Three?
Three.
So it rounds?
Yeah, it rounds up, based, or down, based on 0.5 and up, rounds up.
Traditional rounding rules, yes.
Yeah. Don't make me do math. All right, and so the last one, let's see, 2.6, 0.3. I think we've already talked about these. The last one to talk about was the 1964, 060. 1964-06-0, which is the section that talks about modifications to off-street parking requirements. So we have this whole table that, before that goes through all the different types of uses and identifies, you know, minimum and maximum parking requirements based on the type of use and number of units or square footage. And then the next section here says, you know, here's all the ways that you can modify that calculation. The, the first proposed change is just to clarify, uh, in that section that none of the modifications allow, waiver of the ADA parking space requirements and that those would still be required as per, um, the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. And then also another proposed change is to kind of reorganize the section that talks about waivers or modifications in the Central Business District. Number three here is adding a provision that affordable housing within the CBD zone is exempt from minimum off-street parking requirements.
Is this a Olson Building modification also?
It would apply, um, but also it would, I, you know, we think it would help the development of more, uh, housing, um, and affordable housing in the CBD zone because parking is such a, an expensive, um, proposition. And within the CBD, we really want to encourage more people living downtown, affordable housing, but with the off-street parking requirements, it can sometimes just make it not feasible. And so, um, this would allow, it would encourage actual affordable housing, which we have defined in the code, um, and provide that extra incentive that you don't have to provide, um, off-street parking to hopefully get some more developments built. More affordable units. Any question, any, anything else on that one?
Is it possible to make, um, the same exemption in an M and S, MS zone?
The answer is yes, we could, however, we don't allow housing to any large extent in the MS zone if I'm.
Right.
Thinking of that properly.
I, I mean, I'm okay with that as presented. Say that.
I think there are other ways to modify parking requirements in the MS zone. I don't think I included the entire section here, but for many of the zones, there is an opportunity to request modification to the number of spaces based on a parking study that is submitted by the applicant. You know, and, uh, I think it's 50% reduction in parking spaces or, I don't, sorry, I don't have that code section, but there are, um, other avenues for properties all throughout the city, um, to request a modification to the parking requirements where it makes sense. Including MS zone?
It seems to me, and, um, it's probably because of my lack of understanding, it seems to me that we're doing some real backflips for one particular property, um, throughout several things in the code. And maybe I need more of an understanding about why, um, the splitting the zoning in one block, the modifying the parking. There's a number of things that it does seem like we're really trying to make this fit and make it work. And maybe that's fine, I don't know. It's probably my lack of understanding, but my antennas are up because it sounds like it's, um, modifying things for one particular project is what it sounds like to me.
Comment on parking, my understanding is this approach to parking though would just be, have nothing to do with that building. It would, it would affect that building, but like if we're talking about affordable housing downtown, that's the approach that I think a lot of cities are taking for the reasons that Libby said, so, but it does also address that property. But I think when we're talking about affordable housing in the Housing Action Plan, that's a recommendation from the Housing Action Plan that has nothing to do with Olson or marine hardware. Is, is that, and that's why you described it, right? Because I mean, that's everything I've read on affordable housing, middle housing, all the stuff that we're looking at to try to bring more stuff around that parking is a big component to it and reducing parking requirements. But.
Yes.
Just as a comment, I mean, I, I think that that, as it applies to Central Business District would fall in alignment with everything in the Housing Action Plan. This is a comment.
Yeah, and it would apply to the entire zone, not just to.
Yeah.
One particular property. Um, I just was, brought up the section, the actual code, um, that talks about minimum parking requirements for a bunch of different zones, including the MS zone. Um, and it just wanted to show that it provides an opportunity for a 50% reduction in parking if supported by a parking study. And then there's a bunch of other ways that parking can be reduced through, um, different actions that a development can propose.
But, but we're proposing making it exempt, not a 50%.
In the CBD zone, right. I'm sorry, I thought, I must have misunderstood your question. I thought you were asking about the MS zone.
Yeah, I, I was. I'm, I'm looking at the block is what I'm thinking.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Would you like me to hit the last one or?
I think so.
Okay.
Looks like, looks like we're ready for one more.
Uh, I'm sorry, this one didn't make it onto the list either, but this is also a requirement under our new state law that says that cities can't, or it talks about how cities are allowed to, um, regulate parking for residential uses. Um, and there are a variety of different requirements in that code. So it's RCW 3670A. It applies to minimum required off-street parking spaces for residential development. It talks about, uh, you know, how, requiring cities to allow for tandem parking configurations, can't prohibit tandem parking. You must allow, or can't require that minimum parking be enclosed or unenclosed. There are some requirements for allowing continued use of non-conforming gravel parking areas, so not requiring upgrades on parking areas, um, that are legal non-conforming. You know, if redevelopment or additional development happens, which, you know, typically would be the case that you'd be required to pave and do stormwater and et cetera. But this is saying that certain situations can't, can't require upgrades. Limited on the, uh, dimensional, the max minimum dimension requirements for parking spaces for residential uses. So can't require any larger than eight feet wide by 20 feet long. Um, and then there's also a provision that talks about, um, tree retention and its relationship to parking requirements. So if the, a city has a tree retention code requirement and, um, retaining a tree would cause, let's see. So, says off-street parking is not required as a condition of permitting a residential project if compliance with the tree retention requirements would otherwise make proposed residential development infeasible. So basically saying you keep the tree and you don't have to provide the parking, or the city can't require parking.
Neighbor will tip pick up that tab.
That's it. So that's a whole section that's, um, required under new, new legislation.
Okay, that whole section is required.
Yeah. Yep.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Mills?
Recognizing that the whole section is required, um, there's lots of arguments for minimizing impervious coverage from climate impacts to environmental degradation from runoff of those surfaces, et cetera. But item four almost emphasizes, or not almost, seems to emphasize that everything has to be paved. It gives the two exceptions, pre-existing, uh, conditions and the grass block pavers, which I think are the interlocking, which allows water to go through. Is there a way, and I don't know the answer to this, is there a way where we could encourage use of these except, of the, not the first exception, but the exec, second, uh, exception for materials which achieve the state mandate but allow us to minimize, uh, the runoff that's created? Whether it's encouraging those cross members or stuff, I mean.
Um, so our stormwater code, um, requires developments to look at low-impact development solutions first and, you know, go through a list of why they're not feasible, um, before being able to, um, you know, not utilize them. And so I think our, um, our code would allow for those solutions and also, uh, you know, requires that they be examined. So pervious pavement and, and the interlocking, you know, pavers, grasscrete, et cetera, would all be allowed.
Allowed, but is there a way we can encourage it?
Um, probably. You have any ideas?
As I said, I don't know the answer, I just philosophically would, uh, I mean, for instance, from what you described in the development standards, when my house was built 11, 12 years ago, I guess now, did my developer have to come up with a rationale for paving my driveway with cement and another off-street parking place that was paved with cement rather than?
11 years ago?
It'd have been 2000, probably the, I think the building permit was issued on December 31st, 2014.
Probably not.
So this, what you're describing is something subsequent to that.
Right. Anything else? That's all I've got for you.
Okay, so let's just, quick review, what are we coming back with? Cause we can hardly wait to come back.
So we are coming back with more information about adult concessions. Open space map. Indoor recreation. Trying to identify a way to differentiate between, um, the types of preferred uses there. Design standards applicable to the MS zone. On Commercial Avenue. That's, that's all I've got, was there something that I missed?
Cohousing versus rooming housing.
Oh, yeah.
And that section that we left out, that talks about, um, the size of the lots and all of that. Cause in that section, you've got options, it looked like?
Which, which section? The form and, the minimum lot size? For.
I think it was the form and intensity. We skipped, something we skipped.
Oh, was it the, um, was it the bonus incentive, the, the changes in the marine mixed-use zone? Yeah, so we'll be, we'll talk about those next time as well. Is that what you were thinking?
I don't think so, but.
Okay.
I don't know right now.
Yeah.
We skipped a whole section, I know. Yeah.
We'll talk about the ones we skipped.
A lot of those we've discussed in past meetings too. Especially in that 25, page 25 to page 105, I think it was what we skipped roughly.
Okay.
And Libby, would you remind us next week what we'll be talking about or what, when will this be, when we'll be coming back with this discussion?
So, um, so we'll be back with this discussion next week. We'll also be having the continued public hearing on the comp plan, potentially deliberations and recommendation and also, um, transpo on the, we'll be attending to talk about Division Five, um, street improvement requirements. So it's a very full agenda.
Yay.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, Mr. Mills?
Uh, looking forward to the October 8th to be determined that potential shoreline permit public hearing, it must be for a project that's under a million dollars? Since it's coming to the.
No, I think it's, um, I don't think that's going to be happening, um, but we wanted to keep the option open. It's, I believe it's a type four, so it's one where the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council. So I think it's over a million.
It's over a million, so we make a recommendation as opposed to a.
Right. You hold the public hearing and make a recommendation.
Cause it infects my, infects, affects my travel. You're saying it's getting less likely that that's going to happen on that date?
Yeah, um, I think it's less likely. I can certainly check with the, um, it should have probably been advertised by now, so I'll check with the project planner and confirm one way or another and provide that.
Yeah, that if, that not only affects his travel, but his chairing because I will not be here.
More specifically.
All right.
Okay, item number seven, thank you very much, Libby. Heavy lifting there. Item seven, Planning Department update, Mr. Coleman.
All right, so dovetailing right into that, you know, Libby said potential deliberations and recommendations on the comp plan on the, uh, next week. I, I think that would be our hope and even expectation after we've had several weeks since the, the public hearings and we'll be providing you with the, you know, the comment documentation. So we would really hope that you'd be able to make a recommendation on the comp plan. If you want to hold off longer, I, I, you know, that's your prerogative, but we, just logistically. we'd like to put that to bed for now so we can even potentially bring it to the City Council ahead of the development regulations so they have additional time to review it too. But I don't want to put too much pressure on the Planning Commission to make their recommendations on the comp plan next week, but it would be helpful for the timeline if you're prepared to do so. Related to that, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for now meeting five out of six straight weeks and potentially, and then next week will be six out of seven straight weeks. And looking at this calendar, it, it, the hits just keep coming, potentially October 1st, less likely October 8th, and then the public hearing on the 22nd, which will be the deliberations on the, on the development regulations and, gosh, that sure would be great if we could get it, a recommendation done on the 22nd too for the development regulations portion as we're looking forward to getting the materials to the City Council so they can, our, and our, we have to have this done by the end of the year. So, the agendas, the council agendas are a little tougher in December, just because we start to get into the holiday season. So, our goal is to have the council approve by, by November 24th, their November 24th meeting. So, the sooner we can get it, the Planning Commission recommendations to them, the, you know, the more opportunity they have to have reads before that time. Not trying to put pressure or tell the Planning Commission to move it on, just want to let you know, these are some of the hopes, we'd like to get this passed before we get into the holiday season is our hope. That's all, it's not a requirement. That said, thank you again for all the hard work. This is the hardest time in the comp plan, like we're right at the end, so we really appreciate, the Planning Commission's been really engaged in doing a lot of hard work and good questions and good comments and I'm really impressed with how well the Planning Commission is doing. So, thank you for all of your hard work, thank Libby for all of her hard work and hope she's getting you the information, the way that it works for you to understand and process. I think she's doing a great job and I appreciate just everything, it's, it's as much as we could hope for with this big project.
I think that's unanimous on our, our part as well.
And so, that's all I really have to say about the comp plan and process and development regulations process right now. Moving on to a different topic, you remember several months ago, we hired a consulting company to look at our development review process, development services process, and they have completed their work and got our final drafts available and they are giving a presentation to the City Council on Monday, the September 22nd. That packet is now available, so you can see that report, although you have a lot of other reading to do, I encourage you to work on the comp plan stuff first. You can watch that presentation, that one, that one is specific to how the planning, building, and engineering departments and the associated public works departments review building permit applications and process them and ultimately, you know, inspect them. So, that's really a process-oriented review of our process. And we'll be working to make amendments to our process and make it easier, ultimately, it's, the idea is to make it a repeatable, transparent, understandable permitting process for not just the applicants, but for staff as well, so we don't have to, you know, so we can efficiently process things. But it's most important that it, that the permitting process works for the applicants, so that is what we're trying to do. And so, there'll be a presentation about that on Monday, as well as we'll talk about what steps we will be taking to implement some of the recommendations. That said, it's getting late. Thank you for, thank you for the long night.
Alright, thank you very much, and any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Otherwise, we are adjourned and I can't see the clock on here, so whatever time. 8:37, we are adjourned, thank you.